So it would be a team meeting, would be an IEP meeting, it would be during like a grade level. That's what I was told, that was what was happening a couple of years ago. It may not have been happening last year, but it's still going.
Meaning the director of student services meeting with the faculty at that grade and asking for...
Wouldn't be the director, it would've just been like a specialized liaison. The teachers wouldn't in that grade, and they would just say, "Okay, we have these five students on IEPs."
How are they doing?
How are they doing? Like, very generic, like not...
The middle school has more team level meetings than the high schools, so maybe that's...
So that could very much be exactly what I'm talking about. So I don't know if these are still happening, I get a lot of comments from parents...
They did still have team level meetings.
But I get a lot of comments from parents saying that they don't know what's going on, that they have to actively reach out to say how they're doing. And then lastly, has to do with service delivery. So that's basically the specialized teacher teaching Tommy how to read, or whatever that might be. So within the IEP, the IEP is a legally binding contract between the parent and the school. And in that, you indicate, you know, a specialized teacher is going to teach Tommy 60 minutes a week how to read. So it's pretty clear. And then this year, that's not always happening. So, you know, if a specialized liaison is busy, then a paraprofessional might provide that service. So a paraprofessional isn't trained to deliver that service. You know, they're not trained on how to teach somebody to read, or how to teach somebody how to write, or whatever that might be. So there's been some of that going on that I think needs to be reviewed. Okay, next. As I alluded to earlier, we did send out a survey to all the specialized parents, approximately 40. Twenty-six of them completed it. And then I also posted the survey on the ANSA chat, on the Facebook page. Because I did want to try and get, some of the questions were more broad, and I did want to get some general ed feedback. So that I could compare my specialized parents who, "This is our experience, this is a general ed experience." So there were only 14 of them, clearly a very small number, not a statistically significant number, but it's there. So the main concerns that came out of that, pretty much I've already talked about. Timeliness of forms, meetings, documentation, measurements on benchmarks, progress reports not being there, children not making effective progress, lack of readiness for most high school, specialized education knowledge on how to accommodate disabilities, communication with feedback, kind of all around. And then what I would call excessive disciplining or interim placements. So interim placement is a method where a student is removed from the school and put into a separate school for some form of evaluation, usually it's 45 days. It could be as a result of...
Did you say 45 or 45?
Forty-five, forty-five school days. So essentially two months. They're removed from the district and put into some other place. Usually it's for evaluative purposes. According to the survey, obviously I don't know whether this is accurate or not, but according to the survey, seven parents indicated that they had interim placement this year. Which is about 17% of our special needs population, which is really excessive. I can't say whether that's a correct number or not, perhaps Mr. Dr. McCleary could. Okay, alright.
I'm sorry. It isn't correct.
Okay. And maybe they're talking about prior years?
Inter replacement, which is somebody who's for a very serious reason, with all the due processes having taken place, is put in a special facility, educational facility for observation and evaluation. And that happens rarely. That's a rare, careful, sort of, model of that.
Then it's quite possible that they were talking about over the course of their lifetime. So we can scratch that. Or two parents, or, yeah?
Jessica, do you have similar sort of support data, looking at the question, "Children not making effective progress"? Out of the 26 respondents, do you have similar data as to how many actually weighed in on that people supported them?
Yes. I don't know if you'd want to pull up the other PDF?
Which was?
Yep, that one. So this is small, probably gonna have to explain that. Can you make a figure? Yep, yeah. Maybe one? Yeah, that should be good. Alright. So basically what I did was I took the survey, and there are a number of questions in it to slice and dice the data. So, you know, so this left side that we're looking at here are parents, children, that indicated they were on the IEP this year. So that's kind of the breakout of the children with special needs. You scroll down a little bit. This has to do with the time frames that I was talking about earlier. So consent forms for testing were sent within five days, test results were reviewed within 45 days, et cetera, as you go down. So you can see that there's a fairly good chunk of people that, whose deadlines are being missed. So if we were to talk about, like, if there's a complaint, we can file with an organization called PQA. So in this case, whatever, however many, number that is, 20, 30, you know, we could theoretically file 30 complaints against ANSA for violating these time frames.
Now, question. So this is as reported by respondents. Is the actual data actually kept by the school? These are facts, I mean, you receive a complaint, or receive a request on a certain day, you respond to it on a certain... Is that, is that forever data on these things?
Something that I could certainly add, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so it's certainly something I would approach after this past meeting.
So I think, Chris, your question is, is so, when something is turned in, and then it comes in the system, the school's having to track its responses in a timely fashion, we must add that. Yeah.
Yeah.
As well as, you know, the teachers, both special education as well as general education, are supposed to be keeping records of when services are rendered, so that, you know, you can see whether, okay, here's the IEP, and here's when the services that are dictated in the IEP are being rendered.
Yeah, I'm concerned with the discrepancy, why self-reporting is there, that number with the seven kids who have the interim placement versus that that's not true. How do we account for the differences in these numbers? How do we sort of make heads or tails of it without, I don't know, what it does?
Certainly, I mean, I am no survey writer. We could put together a more robust survey with professional, you know, professional help to make sure that the questions are written in the right way, or leading, or, you know, I tried to do best that I could.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, I think that this is great. I think my question is, how will we... There must be a way to verify that the self-reporting part of the survey has compared to what, we must have data and records kept, like, we could have a comparison of that.
Yeah, so this, so that particular question, so a subset of this data, I did send to Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry and Ms. Pasternak this morning, so that they, you know, would have it. I wasn't expecting a result tonight, I mean, it was only, you know, only this morning that this was passed to them. So, and then, you know, most of the questions offered comments, so I did provide those comments just so that you could get a little insight.
So the question that I was asking about, which was, students were received not making effective progress?
Yes, so if we go to...
Actually, before you switch that over, for number three, you mentioned that in the case of items being overdue, folks could submit a complaint? Just out of curiosity, did any parents submit complaints, or something?
I don't know, I mean, I did not, or I have not submitted anything from a PAC level, because like I could take this, or, you know, ask parents to, you know, fold their hand up. So I could take this as a whole to PQA. I wouldn't know unless somebody's told me specifically that they filed a complaint on this.
And when somebody does file a complaint to PQA, then does PQA reach out to the school?
Yes.
For follow-up?
Yes.
And would we at the board level go, or would that only go to the executive director?
I think it would only go to Eric.
Well, typically, if there's a complaint, they would come to the school, and it would come to the person who's in charge of the school, which would be me, and it would come also probably to whoever is on their list as being in charge of special education, which would be Eric.
Yeah.
Then the school would give us a certain number of days to respond to it. Usually what the Department of Education tries to do is make sure that whatever complaint was satisfied, and the result is, send the results to the person who originally complained, and to the school. For example, that's what happened with the earlier issue, having to deal with the role. That's a typical procedure, so at this point, yeah.
So, just to put some...
I'm sorry, at this point, have we received any of these?
So just to put some context around this, so, you know, the PAC is not responsible for keeping records, obviously, at school. And so PAC is simply reporting out to the board some survey results, which may be accurate, may not be accurate.
Well, probably the same person could've filled it out 26 times.
No, I understand. And so the point is, is that, you know, the board can then say to the executive director, "We'd like to have some insight into, you know, whether services are being..." Some reassurance that services are being rendered. How do you know that? How, you know, it's documented, obviously, and if that's the case, then, you know, you move forward. At a minimum, it would suggest that better communications, you know, is probably a goal here. Better communications among the board, the parents who have children with special education needs in the administration.
To go to...
Just a time check.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, if you can...
Nope.
Scroll down, yeah. Nope.
Oops.
Back. If you can scroll down a little bit, this'll get to the question that you were asking for before, keep going. There you go. So, so this particular question, you know, I received the program report at the same time as regular report cards. Five of the 21, so that was the case. Progress reports gave measurements related, eight out of, is that 22? And then overall, my child made effective progress over the course of the year. So nine out of 23 indicated they did not feel that their child made effective progress. Now, there is a legal definition of effective progress, so effective progress doesn't have to be leaps and bounds. So if I just take a step legally, that's effective progress, as long as, as long as there's movement forward. My assumption is, when somebody looks at that, they're saying, "I expected my child to take a whole step, not a baby step." So, you know, that one is a little bit ambiguous, it's very subjective to the parent.
Yeah, I was interested as to whether it was just a couple of parents, or how many, in this case, we got, 25% or so?
Yeah. If you, I hadn't intended to necessarily go through all these, but if you could scroll down a little bit more, to question number five. Yeah, there you go. So this one, and these again are all kind of subjective, like, you know, do you believe? Do you, you know, how do you feel, kind of, kind of a thing? The ones that I do want to highlight are kind of the bottom two red ones. So, "My child never exceeded his benchmarks at the time of his last annual review." So, again, when we say those measurements, and we say, "We expect, you know, Johnny to be able to read 50 words a minute," or whatever it is. This is saying that 14 out of 22 did not, their child did not meet their stated benchmarks for the year. And then number 12, I would say, or, yeah, the next one down. More than 50% of the goals and benchmarks are different in my child's current IEP versus his last IEP. So that would be another way that you would measure effective progress. Because if you're making effective progress, the benchmark for the next year would change. So once you've read, you know, if you've reached level 10, you would expect your next benchmark to be level 20. So what this is saying is, the parents believe that they had the same benchmarks year to year.
So if it was 100% was different, then that would be good. If 0% were different, then that would suggest...
Exactly, exactly. So, so again, you know, these are subjective, these are people's memories. I'm sure, you know, the school has historical documents of, you know, all the different IEPs, so that that could be validated or invalidated. But this is certainly the parent perspective.
Is it your sense that there's been any change over the course of the year? I know there was a lot of transition at the beginning of the year, is that right?
It's hard to say. The beginning of the year was very tumultuous, I think, for everybody. You know, particularly our kids, the entire staff essentially left. So, you know, I think, I think that parents tried to give the school a lot of leeway to say, you know, okay, everybody's trying to figure out what it is they're supposed to be doing, who they're supposed to be talking to. But we did kind of, I guess you could say, we did expect that a lot of those things would be rectified by the middle of the year. I will say that I do feel like, since my comments at the last meeting, you know, Dr. Curry, who traded, joined us at our, at our last PAC meeting, which was on basic rights. I've gotten some reports that feel like Ms. Pasternak has changed her approach in talking to some of the parents. But I can't say that there's really been a difference from the beginning of the year to now. I think this has been kind of a status quo.
Jessica, when did Ms. Pasternak start?
When did she start with special education? I think sometime late September.
Yeah, so there was a period of time where there was nobody, you know, heading up that.
And parenthetically, if there's another basic rights workshop, I'd certainly encourage members of the board to attend. It, you know, it gives a nice outline in terms of what... So I've been to, I think, to this one, but I also had attended a couple while I was on the school committee agenda very often.
So essentially, you know, this is, you know, what I was presenting. What we would like to see is, we'd like to see some, some training on diversity and differential learning.
Should I be doing something?
Huh?
Should I be doing something?
If you want to flip back to the other one, Ken, you don't have to.
I'm sorry, training for who?
Teachers in administration. So to understand, you know, these children are equal to all other, all other children. You know, I think there are some, some attitudes about what specialized child could or could do. Can they, can they take AP, if they take AP, can they get accommodations? And the answer's yes, you know, there shouldn't be any question. As I indicated last time, I would love to have an outside review of our special education program, how it's set up, is this really the right thing? Clearly, there are some challenges that we continue to have, even with the consultant that we've had on, I think, since I'm over. So maybe a difference advised on it would be beneficial. I'd also like a review of the discipline procedures, and training to ensure that children that have special needs are actually going through. Because there is, as Dr. McCleary said, a very prescribed process that a child with a special, with special needs goes through to identify is whatever happened as a result of their disability. If it is, then, you know, you can go option A, if it's not, then you can go option B. I would love to get a plan presented to the Board of Trustees, and for myself, on how the administration plans to address some of these concerns that I raised. And then I would hope to have financial support reinstated, so that we can start to bring in outside speakers and workshops. Our workshops were always very well-attended, 50, 60, 70 people. They were generally broad in nature, whereas, yes, they helped the special needs parent, but they were also very relevant to the general ed population. I'm not talking about thousands of dollars, but, you know.
What has the funding looked like in the past?
One year, we spent $2,000 on one particular, one particular person that was, again, very well-attended. It was on anxiety. Other years, it's been $300, $400. It's not, I mean, you try to find people that would come for free, but usually the ones that...
You get what you pay for.
Right. So. That's all I can say.
Word members are for free.
Yeah, my point.
No, I'm just saying, you get what you pay for.
No, I know what you're saying.
So like, there was one time, we had a woman who came to talk about anxiety, and instead of paying her, she had a book. And Mr. Pracato purchased like 40 books and gave them to all the teachers. I don't know if you remember, if you were here, he bought a book. But, so instead of paying her directly, he kind of used like professional development funds to buy her materials to send to the teachers, so that they could learn how to better work with a kid that had anxiety. You know, so there's certainly creative ways of that. Thanks for having me.
Do people have any questions on this? We get to governance, a little bit update on this.
Yeah, actually, that was going to be my question, is in terms of, were some of these recommendations shared in governance? Okay, so I guess we'll get to specifics with that.
So, and substantive concerns about special ed, are we following the letter of the law? Are we following the spirit of the law? Are we fulfilling the charter in helping all children, like, the liability in the law? Yep. When's the time to discuss that?
Well, now, if you want, it's just that thing. I think we should...
No, I'm highly concerned about what we've heard and quality of the conversation. And there are several dimensions. One is the letter of the law, and, you know, we get some information about that, is to find out what are the facts? Have the turnaround been within the prescribed time? Have the recourse been sent out as there's supposed to be? So, you know, what's going on there in terms of compliance? That's maybe some work, but we should know what that is. Beyond compliance, I think there's, what are we doing within the spirit of, we say? We say in our charter, and this is what makes us different, what entitles us to the money we get, is that kids regardless of ability can excel. So do we really believe that, and how are we behaving in that way? That's, we're hearing this kind of feedback, and again, you know, it's self-report. We qualify in seven ways to Sunday, but it's alarming. That there's a, so we want to find out what the compliance thing is. I had included in our packages the story from the telegram of Gazette last December, where the picture of power progress against power goals for ELL and students with disabilities was pulled, both in magnitude and direction.
Yeah, I should say a few words about that, because this really concerns not what's going on inside the school in terms of the way that the current special education population or ELL population is being served. It has to do with how many of the students have...
Yes, I understand that, and I find this a dollar.
I think the reason I want to qualify is because it's an ongoing debate, it's been going for years, whether charter schools have the same number of students in them.
But it speaks to an attitude, when you have a charter that says, "Children will excel regardless of ability."
No, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to point out is that the school has now a wait list, and we admit people through a lottery, which is, it was random.
And how you market the lottery says something about your attitude towards children regardless of ability.
Yes, no, I agree with you. So that, for that very reason, each year, in our annual report, we report out to the state as to how we are trying to market the school to all the populations. So for example, to take the ELL students, we have a flyer, we translate it into different languages, they're spoken in a local area. We put these flyers in various...
And I think we examine those things and make sure that we are doing it at a high level of excellence, not that we're complying, not that we're spreading a few flyers around. That we're acting like we really mean it, because what's out there, I think, is, "Oh, ANSA, that's the school for smart kids." Not the school for kids who want to be smart. And we have to be proactive. And we have to really mean it, and I'm not convinced that we do.
So I concur with Chris's points here. I mean, I think, you know, I think there's a, you know, relatively easy path forward, at least initially, which would be, you know, certainly Dr. McCleary could, you know, bring to the board, you know, the school's perspective in terms of compliance, in terms of, you know, sort of reassuring around compliance, talking about the recruiting plan, things of that nature, and sort of, you know, sort of saying, "Okay, here's the fact." Because obviously, again, the school's the one who's responsible for, for tracking the, the, the plans and progress against the plans, as well as recruiting. And I think also, you know, so part of, you know, part of this, as Chris was saying, is sitting here saying, "What's the vision? What is our vision of, for this, for this, you know, part of ANSA? What are we trying to do here?" And, you know, that would include, how are we resourcing this? And so what resources are we putting into this, and so forth? So, to me, that would seem like a, you know, very reasonable, fairly easy next step, to get some information out. You know, you used the term alarming, I don't think it's unfair, but, you know, let's, let's get the facts out on the table. I think that's worth Justice saying, and I think that's what we all would want to see done.
So let me share just a little bit from a governance perspective, because we spent quite a bit of time talking about this, and Jessica sharing on the live what we shared here. And there's an awful lot. So from sort of a priority standpoint, can you sort of categorize or bucket those concerns and issues that would be from a compliance perspective versus those that are from a non-compliance perspective? So let's, let's start there, and I think as you stated earlier when you first began speaking, that you have now shared some of the issues with Dr. McCleary, as well as Dr. Curry, and others relative to what those concerns are, or if they may or may not have been aware of. So that was sort of the first piece, of just making sure that everyone is aware.
And if you look at the presentation, the process, is kind of where it put the compliance. So if you think of process, you can kind of think, those are where, like, the compliance concerns are addressed. Yeah.
And so can we just finish this? So then there was sort of a second piece, which we said was, we really need to sort of talk about, what's the approach that we want to take now? Because there's some validation that needs to take place here, and confirmation, and making sure that we have all the facts. And so as we talked about from the governance committees, we really proposed that it would be, one possible path forward would be to have at least two governance committee members work with, Justice as president, and we spoke of Allison from the Legal's perspective, because we're talking about compliance here, as well as Roger, because of his walk of experience and he has a lot of knowledge in the series, been on the board for quite a few years. So that was, I think, sort of a proposal that we wanted to make to the board relative to, as a possible path forward, when we're talking about the governance, trying to figure it out, to address some details.
So I appreciate that, but, you know, I think the concern's been raised. Chris raised the concern, and I share it. You know, if, if, I'd like to understand that we are compliant, that we are compliant with the way we handle IEPs, that the way we're recording progress on those IEPs, et cetera, et cetera, that we are in fact compliant with that. There's also certain things that we're supposed to be doing in terms of being welcoming of students that have special needs. There's also certain things that we're supposed to be doing in terms of being welcoming of students that have special needs, encouraging them to come here, encouraging them to stay here when they have, and, you know, how does that get resourced and so forth? So, I mean, I appreciate the effort of a few board members working with PAC. That, I'm not sure that gets us the information that is asked for.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what we, what we talked about from a governance standpoint was much different than what you're... We're talking about how to approach this, and having a couple of board members who are closely with Jessica. Really, it's about approach. So some of what's been shared here today, I think, is part of that approach that may be wrapped up.
And my point is, this is not about working with, with the PAC, because the PAC is reported to us in the board. We need to get the information from the entity that has that information, which is, in fact, the school administration.
But I don't think this is a contradiction here. I think Ed is saying that a couple of board members will work with CPAC to come up with a plan. And part of that plan will in fact be to go to the administration, get the right data.
Yes.
But it's not just getting this report from CPAC or PAC. It's to work with them to make sure we can come up with a plan in cooperation with each other and then execute.
You're skipping a step. Which is, where I think where governance needs to is come back here so that we have a discussion in principle. We understand compliance, we have to comply when we do that, is what do we really mean by acting affirmatively? Or how much, how far do we want to extend ourselves to be welcoming? How far do we want to extend ourselves to make sure that kids with different kinds of needs make it through? That will lean into, I think, English language learners too was another areas. How much do we want to do better? And so, I think we have to have that discussion. I think, I guess, find out the facts, have that discussion, and then proceed with the plan.
All right. So where, so could I, I'm sorry. Well, I think I could just say, though, I think we maybe, I think there are a few different issues. And I think the couple that you mentioned in terms of, some of the things spoken to here, I think we need to address them. It is related, but I think it is somewhat distinct from coming to a plan with Jessica and CPAC on how do we address these concerns? Because these concerns are immediate, and they need immediate addressing. If we're not in compliance, we need to get in compliance. If we're away from the spirit of what we should be doing, we need to get into that. Then beyond that, and beyond that...
So compliance, yes, if we're in the...
But, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking at this issue. We should, but I think they are, they're related, but they're distinct.
I agree. But I think that we do have an important philosophical discussion to have. When we go from compliance, got it. Acting affirmatively, how we want to do that, that's the philosophical discussion that we have to have. And that, I don't think can be delegated to a center.
But the delegation to the smaller group was around a plan and an approach. It wasn't, here's what we're going to do. So we're not skipping any of the steps that you talked about. It's just that we felt that, and still do, that having a laid-out approach to come back and say, here's the plan based on having worked with Jessica, and the priority, we felt initially is compliance. So not that the other issues aren't as important, but we have to ensure the school by ability. So when first started with compliance...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, compliance. And, but the philosophical discussion needs to be one of the first steps in compliance.
No, I disagree. That's not the first step. The first step of the plan, the first step of the plan is to get the administration of the school...
Yeah, I did not say the first step.
Okay, excuse me. The, what we need to do is get the administration to bring to the board, not PAC, okay? That's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to oversee the administration of the school to see if we are compliant. If the, if the, if the school comes back and says, we're in compliance, then we can move forward with this idea of a plan and so forth. But I don't know how we can create a plan if we don't even know whether we're in compliance or not.
So, I guess the first, for me, first step, now you've met, I guess, I guess I'm going to refer to you, Dr. McCleary, with what's been shared with you at this point, do you feel you have enough information to walk down a path of looking at what's compliant, what's not compliant? In terms of governance committee was to, was to at least work with CPAC president, Jess, to make sure that, number one, we have all the issues covered that have been brought up, and then to form an approach as to what would be the next step, to bring that back to the board and say, here is the approach. And I think what I hear you Ken saying is that, from your perspective, you'd like to say, well, we've heard it. Can the administration just respond to what's been shared at this point?
What I hear you saying is, we've got a, we've got a plan, we've got to develop approach. What I'm saying is, we don't even know where we are. So how can you develop a plan to address issues when you don't know? Okay, this is self-reported data, which is, which is good in that it has given us an alert that there may be an issue. But that's not records. Records are kept by the school. And the school has specific responsibilities to know what the, you know, what students have IEPs, and whether those IEPs are being worked. And so they should be able to look at those records and report back to the board and say, we're in compliance, or we're not in compliance. And the answer to that question tells us then where we need to go.
So, so I wanted to refer back to you, Dr. McCleary. Do you feel you have enough information based on what's been shared at this point in order to respond to what you, what's, to verify and validate where we believe we are in compliance, or if there are any situations we think we're not in compliance? Do you have enough information at this point?
I think I have general information, but I need something, I, again, speaking for Ms. Pasternak, I deal with this every day along with special education teachers. There needs to be specific information. So if somebody, for example, says that, if somebody says in a survey that their IEP isn't being effectively addressed or the steps are not being taken, I don't know which IEP to look at unless somebody says, okay, I'm misfit. You have not fulfilled my IEP within the allotted time, or so, whatever it is. And then we are responsive to that. I, I know that Ms. Pasternak is very responsive, so if somebody asks her something, she gets back, presumably within $24. And I guess that's my answer. If you, if I get a specific, or any number of specific issues that need to be addressed, we would adjust this.
I think that goes back to the approach, making sure that we are covering all the bases that need to be covered.
Um, I, I think what, a good way forward, I could certainly put together a list of the metrics that I think are relevant for what we need to see. And then I could present them to Dr. McCleary to go back and pull that data. We are only talking about forty IEPs, give or take, maybe it's a little bit more, a little bit less. We're not talking about robust amounts of data. So I think if I can come up with this list, and then you can basically go through all forty IEPs and check, check, minus whatever it is, and then come up with a full, complete picture to address what Ken is saying. And then we can take that data and go on to the governance committee and say, okay, this is, this is real data, and then develop that plan, you know, be it written compliance, okay, we've met the minimum. Now where do we want to see from a forward-looking?
And am I the only one who's troubled by the fact that we have the PAC giving a presentation talking about the fact that we are not in compliance? And that we don't, and, and with only forty IEPs, plus our minds, that, that the administration of the school can now come to us and say, no, we're in compliance. We've looked at the records and we're in compliance.
So, so I, I don't have an issue with, if that's all that it takes. I don't know that that's all it takes. I saw a lot of data presented, and it seemed, and I don't, I don't know the details. And that's why I saw value in what was suggested in terms of two board members and Jessica getting together to make sure we're in agreement. What is the data we need to get back from the administration? It's not, it's not a two-month exploration and discussion on planning phase. It's just a brief get-together, make sure we're in agreement on what are the attributes we need. It may be more than just IEP dates. I don't know. I don't understand what's, what is required. And then go to the administration requesting that information.
I understand you don't know that, but the administration does know, or should know, that they are in compliance with the IEPs or not.
But is it just the IEPs?
No, no, but we, we should...
But that's, that's, if it's more than just the IEPs, that's why we need a plan to make sure, are we in compliance with IEPs and other things? So for example...
Respectfully, I disagree. Someone has just, we have had, I don't know how many days now, that someone has provided information to the administration that, that parents feel that we are not in compliance. And it should be fairly easy for the administration to sit there and look at the records and say, no, we are in compliance. I would have expected this evening to be reassured that we are in compliance with the forty IEPs that we have.
Okay, well, she, Ms. Tasky came to the governance committee meeting, and we asked her to put this together, and she provided the information to the administration today.
Yes, I think, to reiterate, if we, if, if Ms. Pasternak or special education teacher is provided with a specific request, we respond to that request. So, but questions by their very nature have to be specific. I can't answer a generalized question. It's got to be a specific student, a specific IEP.
Well, the general question is more on timeframe, and some of those compliance issues, the timeframe issues, right? That's the general question, kind of more than advocating a regulation, but I think the school has to provide it.
Sure.
Excuse me. The first question is really, does the school have the records? I mean, it seems like, it seems like a simple question, and if legally, excuse me, if legally the school...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you cannot speak. This is not a dialogue.
Well, it's a discussion...
This school has the records. It is a discussion among board members.
Okay, because I haven't heard Dr. McCleary say he has the records. I just want to put that out there, because that's, that's what your, that's what your board members basically say.
So, I, I like Jessica's suggestion of coming up with a list of very focused questions. Do, when you say metrics, like for instance, how many IEPs are X? And, and if it's a manageable task, I think that's a good place to start. And I think it is concerning. We want to make sure, of course, that we are doing not only what we absolutely have to, but what, everything we can for our students. So, I, I, I would, I like your suggestion. Must say the name. Good, good, you have your taste. Or a mom's do.
So is there any concern with moving forward with this proposal? The governance committee had come up with having two members of the governance committee, Roger is not actually a board member, to work with Jessica to develop this, asking the school for, for at least the compliance information where the students can put it together.
I was just going to say, you got to help me put a timeframe on it, so then we have a, you know, we have an ending.
Yeah.
So I'd like to know if compliance has been investigated and areas of non-compliance have been identified, and there are plans in place to correct them at our next meeting. That's the report that I'm going to make.
I think that's reasonable. All right, we'll ask the school to provide that for you.
And with that is...
The, the compliance related concerns, at least timeframes, not maybe the individual specific...
So, so I'm just unclear. So is Dr. McCleary just going to go get the data, page on this report? Or are you first, are the board members, as governance suggested, the board members going to be meeting with Jessica, getting a list, and making sure we have a clear list of what we need from Dr. McCleary?
I would, speaking for the school, I would appreciate a clear list. I can give any information. We keep very detailed records of all the student IEPs. We have four meetings today with parents about IEPs. They are held regularly. And I have a very high amount of confidence in the team that we have in place. I just need, I need some specific questions to answer. If somebody says, there were five times when this particular IEP was late, or whatever the question is, I then know where to go. I say, okay, I'll look at those five, and I will come back, and I will tell you what those five were.
You don't have a log that carries the dates of all the IEPs and the dates they're supposed to be done, the dates they're... Isn't that a great use of it?
Yes, but I, I don't know what, I, I, how much, do you want me to just look at all forty IEPs and see if there are any, any irregulars and then report that back to what you're asking? I'm trying to get some clarity. There was a lot of, there were a lot of things in here, some very general, some moving closer to specific. But I, I need to know what exactly is being looked for.
So governance, you know, I can, sorry, I see. So, so governance has made a recommendation to the board. Chris has basically made a proposal or suggestion, which I think is very good, which is one relative to by the next meeting, we have, it's been identified as non-compliance, and what are the plans to be put in place so that those items do become compliant? Is this something we need to vote on as a board? So that we can move forward, or can just be...
I'd like just general consensus, however, that people are comfortable with this approach and with the people that, that...
So, so I'll just say, I'm comfortable with the approach. Dr. McCleary is asking for specific questions. I heard generality there. I think there's value in having Jessica and the board members.
I think the document that I provided this morning is very specific. Like, I, you know, I've had, you know, five complaints of this happening, six complaints of that happening. So I think, and I want to say that's maybe like twelve questions in total. I mean, it wasn't, you know, it's not like fifty.
When was the document approved?
This morning.
To whom?
You, Dr. Curry, and Erin.
Is that a survey?
Uh, it is a subset of the survey that was specific to compliance issues.
Is that email? Was that in the mail?
No. And I was going to send the entire survey, but like, with the compliance issues, I kind of pulled out the specific compliance issues so it wouldn't get kind of muddled with, you know, subjective and opinion and stuff like that.
So I'll just jump in, since you guys started the conversation. I'm comfortable with the idea of, of addressing these specific issues through, through the approach that you've set, with the caveat that we get information at the next meeting that says, these are, you know, we have these many IEPs, and we are in compliance, or we are not. We should be able to look at the records and be able to say, yes, we're in compliance, or no, we're not.
So that, that's what Chris said, is what I...
Correct. So, that's what I say. I find we're going with the approach that the governance committee has said, now that we are saying, in a more immediate sense, we're going to get some feedback about the specific compliance.
I was going to ask...
Just in an unusual way to say it's a great idea.
I was going to ask really, if this is not in our folders, is it possible for us to get a copy of both this, this presentation and the one with the data?
Yeah. Not, not the, not the ones with data, but those two things.
The two things that we were presenting tonight. Can you email that to us? Thank you.
They'll be uploaded. They'll be uploaded with the meeting minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have one question, just to understand the next step. So, so you've sent a list to Dr. McCleary. Are now we expecting that governance is not going to be speaking with Jessica, and we're all set that Dr. McCleary has a specific question?
No.
That's only one.
No.
Or, or, okay. Yeah.
Two steps, which is that still, the recommendation was for Rep. Roger and Allison to meet with Jess and ferret out what issues, questions need to be asked, which may have already, some may have already been provided, are there additional ones? And then with that happening, then Dr. McCleary and the administration would come back with what items fall into a non-compliance category, which ones we say, oh, these are actually compliant, and what are the solutions and recommendations that have to hold for those items that are not compliant to become compliant items.
And to prevent it from happening again?
Yes.
Because some of the compliance issues, you know, once the dates have passed and then, you know, the meeting happens or whatever, like, you're, you know, technically in compliance at that point because you've now rectified that. So it's really a plan to prevent that from happening again.
And then at a later date, or post this discussion at the next meeting, of all of discussion, then I think we need to discuss how do we address concerns you brought in terms of our direction as an institution. Okay, great.
So that's the agenda. The agenda for next time will be this first step, probably not the second step.
Discuss, or maybe discuss a plan for the next...
Yeah. Ed, you started with the governance committee. Was there any other updating on the table?
Uh, yes, that was a big part of our meeting.
Oh, just so people know, I actually pulled some of the policies. They were going to be part of the discussion, but just giving... be part of the discussion, but just giving the facts that they had designed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's several policies that, uh, were discussed, some guidelines, um, those that we shared at, uh, this reason, what Pauline just said. And, uh, that's really probably about it. We spent a lot of time on our planning policy, but we'll go into that, uh, at next month's meeting along with Special Education. So, that's about it.
Chris, uh, break, sunracing in the mail.
So, campaign stands at just under twenty thousand, past day, twenty eight. Um, I think we're gonna wrap it up next week. And by wrapping it up, we need to stop chasing them, of course, of all, except one, although there'll be one more follow-up. Uh, as I think I mentioned before, I think we have actually done a little bit more than we've done in the past. You know, in terms of, there was a discussion of the campaign with PTO, there was, you know, the call-a-thon, the government thank you, you know, a couple of things that Marine did that we have not done before. So, you know, I think we gave a good effort. We'll wrap it up, see where it leads us.
Is it a timing issue, this time of year?
May, this is more or less the time of year we did last year. Maybe it's a little a month later. Um, so I think it's a, I, I'd be guessing, but I think it's a room of hot issue, at least. You know, you want it to happen. That is a problem that hung around the right chest. But, forget with that, otherwise the committee was unable to meet, so, um, anyway.
Okay.
Let me have another presentation. So, um, you all, all of you have in your packet, uh, ones with small, I also made some copies that are to do a page. I didn't realize it was gonna be in there. So, for those of you who have eyesight like me, you tend to be welcome to do the to-do page. So, um, I'm gonna go down to the next one. So I'm pleased, um, obviously to report on, on behalf of the Education Committee. So you all, you all will recall that in March, I did an initial brief out of some of the material, um, and said that it was gonna take a couple more months before we were ready to report out, uh, to you on recommendations. So although the first three bullets are, uh, in the presentation, again, I'm not gonna cover those, um, because we already talked about those at March. So, um, so if you go on to the next one. So here's the membership, if you recall. Dr. McLeary, Dr. Curry have been, uh, present at the meetings and been providing, uh, the, uh, some, uh, great insights. And I say that because, um, uh, you know, so Dr. McLeary at the last meeting said, you know, "It'd really be good for us to go through an exercise as a committee to sort of each come to the next meeting ready to say, you know, sort of what is the purpose of education, what is it we're trying to accomplish?" And it's a great question because it, it, it does, uh, provide a foundation for so much of what the Education Committee has, uh, has been discussing. But, um, uh, they, both Dr. McLeary and Dr. Curry have been at the meetings, providing great insights. Jess has been, as faculty rep has been, they are providing sort of faculty perspective as well. And then we have, um, uh, well, in addition to Liz and me and Jess too, we have five parents, uh, that are supporting there. So the next one is the mission. I'm not gonna go through that. Again, this was something that we covered, um, other than to say that this is the mission of the Education Committee as laid out in the bylaws. Uh, so again, we'll come straight from that. The next one, talking again about the fact that we are supposed to do pre-board tasks, meaning on behalf of the board to, to, to examine certain issues relative to academic program success and faithfulness to the charter as defined and sustained through the charter, the accountability plan, the curriculum instructional policies and so forth. Uh, we're also supposed to look at training and awareness for not only the committee but the board and also do some annual goal setting report out to you, do self-evaluation and so forth. Uh, next chart talks about progress and goals. Again, you know, some of these are ongoing, some of these have been accomplished. Uh, some of these, I guess, the reports to the board we're doing this month. And then the next one is, uh, going to be a committee self-evaluation, what we're in the process of doing. So the next one talks about the challenges. And so this is where we start to get into, uh, you know, again, the, the Education Committee has been struggling with maintaining a perspective on governance, that is, you know, sort of planning, uh, providing a planning framework for the, uh, for the, um, for the work that we, uh, that is done, ensuring the goals are met, as opposed to management, which would be organizing the work rather than the framework or operations actually doing that work. And so, management and operations clearly are in the hands of the administration, governance in the hands of the board, and therefore the Education Committee, serving on behalf of the board, uh, does that. As you might imagine, when you talk about academic program success and faithfulness to the charter, the line is not really clear between what is governance and what is management and operations. And so that's been part of our discussions there. So, um, so that covers sort of the first two bullets here. Um, the next three cover the topics, and I'm gonna get into these more detail in the upcoming slides, I won't talk about that. But again, our challenges that we've been focusing on are role of technology, encouraging innovation, and then the use of alternative learning strategies. Okay. So, this next slide, recommended focus areas, within the context of ensuring the schools' academic program success and faithfulness to charter, we have spent most of our time talking about three issues. The use of technology and supportive learning. And this, uh, innovation in learning and how to encourage that. And then the use of alternative strategies. And so this runs a whole gambit of, uh, part of what Jess was saying earlier about providing different learning strategies for people who learn differently, I mean, different learning style, as well as the use of outside and online resources. So AMSA, uh, and its resources is able to provide certain programs, has access to other learning resources that are outside. But then how do you incorporate that? When you have a charter that sits there and says that, you know, you have a certain program you're supposed to put forward. Then what are the use, what is the use of field trips, uh, travel, internships and so forth? How does that fit into the AMSA, um, the AMSA, uh, uh, the AMSA, uh, academic program? So technology, so let me talk to briefly about three of these. So technology, so Dr. McLeary and Dr. Curry have been, you know, it's, the discussions with them have been very helpful. Jess has provided her perspective as a, as a member of the faculty as well. So, you can imagine, I think we all have seen, where technology is used in a learning environment and can quickly become a crush, uh, where you use the technology to do the operation rather than learning the operation. And so because of much of our stuff is around math, science, technology, certainly you use technology. We teach computer science, you know, use computers if you're teaching computer science. But then when you start to get into other fields, at what point does technology in fact become interference, an interfering factor in the student's learning? And that's not easy to do. It's a struggle, obviously, that Dr. McLeary, Dr. Curry, the faculty, they're dealing with on a, on an ongoing basis, is they take a look at their curriculum, uh, take a look at ways of using that. So, uh, Dr. McLeary had pointed out there's some things that have been done previously, some things that he is initiating himself. An example of that is in the, this year's budget, uh, some additional funding for, uh, technology resources and so forth. Um, so, so there's, you know, in this regard, so think now of our role, the governance role, of taking a look at the academic program, stewards of that program, of faithfulness charter. Can you go back on charter, sorry? And faithfulness to the charter and taking a look at the charter. How, how can, you know, given our charter is as old as it is, how do we incorporate technology into that in a way that recognizes the benefits of technology? So, for example, the access to outside resources to learn more, to learn better. But also recognizing that when kids leave AMSA and they go to college, they're gonna be using technology there, and so preparing them, uh, for that as well. And all doing that in a way that it doesn't interfere. So how do we as a board struggle with that, support that and so forth? And then what is the administration doing about that? That's, you know, we, you know, that's where a lot of our discussions were. Uh, innovation, uh, going to the next one, innovation in learning. Uh, there's a lot of innovation. We have creative faculty, they come up with ideas. Uh, you know, some ideas are, uh, very experimental, some ideas are connected to, uh, the charter, to the curriculum, others perhaps not so much. So not all new curriculum elements are necessary innovation, necessarily innovations. And even those that are innovations, not all of them support our charter. So how do we, as a board, see the role of innovation, ways to encourage that, policies to set up and so forth, in order to encourage innovation and learning? Uh, and of course, Dr. McLeary again, and Dr. Curry and the faculty, uh, the department chairs are doing their own thing to try to encourage innovation. We had some discussions about the use of alternative learning strategies. I think we all recognize that different people learn in different ways. Um, and again, AMSA has limited resources, uh, and so therefore can provide, um, a broader program if it taps into that. So maybe a, a good example of that would be, um, foreign languages that we don't have the resources to be able to teach in-house, but we could allow, uh, you know, you know, them to use, uh, to, to tap into outside, uh, resources for them. Well, how does that fit into our program? Uh, how do we ensure that those are, you know, they're rigorous? Uh, how do we, you know, how do we ensure the quality of the academic program success and so forth? And so it, it's not just about providing those resources, but then also making sure that, that they fit into our curriculum and to our charter-driven curriculum and so forth. Uh, how do we incorporate field trips? Uh, so we have lots of field trips, some of which connect back to the curriculum and support the curriculum, others that don't seem to. Um, we, there are some field trips, like nature's classroom that we used to do and we don't anymore. Uh, there are some things that we do now, uh, and, uh, and, you know, we put some energy and resources to. Some succeed and go forward, others do not. How do we decide which ones to, to, uh, to encourage and so forth, and which ones, you know, maybe don't get it through? Um, how about trap, especially international travel? We have international trips and we talk about, and so this global world that we're a part of and so forth. So how does that factor in? Does, do we try to connect that factor in? Uh, many schools provide opportunities for internships where students can not only learn on a theoretical level, but they can go apply that in real world, which helps reinforce the learning, provide some context then for when they go to college, they have some real world experience that they're able to use in addition to the, what they've learned in school. That provides some of the foundation. That sounds great, but then that's a, you know, then, then the school's got to administer that, support that, there's financial resources involved in that. Uh, there's, you know, what role does that, how does that fit into the AMSA curriculum and so forth? So again, all sort of, uh, difficult challenges. So these are three of the challenges that we came up with in terms of our focus areas to sort of recommend to you, to the board. The Education Committee offers this up as perhaps three places to start for the board to look at. And again, in a governance capacity as stewards of, uh, AMSA's academic program success and faithfulness to the charter. So, next slide, please. So then for each of these, you know, some questions come up, okay? So what is our position on these three areas? The use of technology, um, innovation in learning, innovation in the classroom, alternative learning strategies. What is, what is our position on that? Um, and, you know, this is a broad set of stakeholders. So it's not only the board, the board members and how we feel about this individually and collectively. But then there's the administration who has insights into this, the faculty, the, uh, the parents, the students and so forth. Um, we all sort of have our different perspectives. And so try to, trying to bring that together when there are different perspectives, even within the board, there are different perspectives, for example, on the use of technology. Some feeling that we ought to be doing, thinking, you know, uh, taking things, uh, taking on technology more aggressively and others not. But you expand beyond the board and start looking at other stakeholders that we are responsible for responding to, um, the positions are very different. So then if we then, you know, try to ascertain what the community's position is in that, okay, what is our role in doing that? And specifically, what policies need to be implemented? So these would be policies in some part that the board might be responsible for and policies, on the other hand, that the administration is responsible for. What infrastructure needs to be there? So, you know, technology, uh, certainly is an easy, uh, idea of how infrastructure in fact we need to have. But even, you know, again, if you look at an internship program, well, now you're talking about administrative, uh, resources that have to be dedicated, uh, to, uh, to nurturing that, to getting internship, uh, opportunities and so forth. So there's infrastructure, staff and budget. Uh, each of these areas would require professional development because as, as our understanding of how to use technology, of how to encourage innovation, of how to use alternative strad, learning strategies, each of these, you know, are continuing to evolve and will obviously continue to evolve for, for, you know, for the foreseeable future. So professional development has to be done. So there's a whole range, uh, of, of things that we would need to provide, even if, you know, we sort of figured out what we wanted to do, what our vision of success would look like. Well, what's the path there and what resources do we need to focus on? And then how do we evaluate the effectiveness of that? And so there's obviously a monetary thing. If we're gonna invest certain resources, are we getting a return on the investment? But there's also, you know, a limited amount of time and focus of resources, okay? You know, Dr. McLeary, Dr. Curry, other members of the administration, the faculty, et cetera. There's only so many hours in the day. And so how do we, you know, how do we focus our resources in the right area? Innovation and learning is an excellent example of that. You know, having a creative faculty, they could come up with hundreds of different things that, uh, many of which would look great to support. Well, so how do you sort of down-select then in order to be able to provide the necessary resources to move these ideas beyond ideas and into fruition? Okay. And then how do we evaluate this against our charter? Our charter has some specific things. And Dr. McLeary has some ideas about, you know, where we have gone over the previous ten years in terms of, of the charter and our faithfulness to that and returning to some of the earlier trends in the charter. Uh, and that's, that's, you know, that's attractive. And so, but, uh, if, if that is in fact what we're trying to do, how do we, uh, how do we measure the effectiveness of the specific steps that we take? Okay. So, some very meaty questions for the board to explore. Okay, next one. So then at the time, you know, if you're gonna take action, if the board's gonna take action, um, so there are different mechanisms for doing this. So, the board could take some of these things, some of these questions on itself if it felt that it was important to do that. Um, in many cases, the executive director is already doing some things and we could, you know, say, for example, "Hey, Dr. McLeary, we'd like you to come in and talk about, you know, your philosophy of using technology to support learning. Give us some, you know, insights on that. What are your plans to do that? What are the resources that you're gonna need to support those plans and so forth?" So the ED is another way. You obviously could set up a task force, or you could bump things back down to the Education Committee and say, "Hey, we'd like you to work these issues within the committee and come to us with recommendations." All four of these are available to us on the board. They're different appropriateness, you know, we can't take everything on as a board. And so there are times when we might wanna kick certain things back to others. Uh, again, you know, for example, the, you know, the Ed Committee might be an appropriate resource. The executive director, who's already doing things in all of these areas, would also be a good resource. And so we'd wanna take a look at that. The Education Committee is- The Education Committee is very interested, though, in understanding from the board, what does the board feel that the Education Committee could do to support the board and its decision-making on that, okay? So, we struggled, obviously, coming up with, you know, these areas and then coming up with some questions and then saying, okay, here's the next steps, okay? What can the Education Committee do to support that? And then, you know, we need not only, you know, not only to provide you support, but we're looking to get guidance in our planning as an education committee for the next year. What are some of the things that we need to take on? So, all of these, all these initial issues came, you know, sort of bubbled up from, within the board. Sometimes from parents, oftentimes from Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry, but these things all bubbled up from the board, from within the committee. But we're also looking at the year to come, thinking that the board might want to sit here and direct the committee and give us some guidance on how we ought to do that. This last point around training, there are some specific responsibilities that are outlined to us as board members. If you take a look at Mass General Law, if you look at the Code of Mass Regulations, if you look at what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provide to us as a board in terms of guidance, there are some specific things that we're supposed to do as a board relative to the academic program's success and faithfulness to the charter. These are shared responsibilities in many cases with the executive director. You know, the Accountability Plan is a good example of that. Dr. McCleary wrote that Accountability Plan, but we're also, and then reports out to us in terms of what the school is doing, but the board is ultimately responsible for that annual report where we're reporting on the progress. How do we evaluate our, you know, the way, how do we assess the way that we're evaluating progress against our Accountability Plan? Dr. McCleary did a great job coming up with a good Accountability Plan. Good in the sense that it focused on a few discrete, fewer discrete measures, okay? But I think the board also needs to be able to, you know, to be a very active participant in defining those elements of the Accountability Plan, those design elements. And Chris, that goes back to some of the work that you and I were doing earlier on in terms of, you know, what are those design elements and how to, you know, how, you know, so there's some specific design elements, a sort of a tighter, redacted set that goes in the Accountability Plan. But there are design elements also in the charter, as we're aware, and so how do we sort of reconcile that smaller set that is in the Accountability Plan with that larger set that is in the charter? And again, that's a shared responsibility between the board, from a governance perspective, and the administration from a, from a management and operations perspective. So, I think there is opportunity for training of the board in that, in that responsibility, carrying out that responsibility in the coming year. Next one. So, just to wrap up, sort of our initial set of goals is to continue to develop our strategic priorities list. This is the list that we have sort of running now in terms of, right now, technology done there, innovation in the classroom, alternative learning strategies. But we have a list of strategic priorities that help us focus our time, knowing that we have, you know, about nine or 10 meetings over the course of the year to work together. So, we're having to focus our efforts and we'll continue to do that. The committee is aware, Education Committee is aware of, sort of, you know, our goal, Chris, to work, you know, through the, you know, jointly with the Governance Committee on the key design elements and sort of that statement of guiding principles. Also, the third goal is to collaborate with the board as a whole, but also the executive director, to develop strategies, policies, budgets, and so forth for these annual academic achievement goals for the use of technology and supported learning. I think there's a lot of energy around the committee. I know some members of the board feel that way. Certainly, there are members of the larger AMSA community who are asking a lot of questions about, you know, why are we not using technology more? And so, I think we should be proactive in defining what the appropriate use of technology is, articulating that, engaging the AMSA community in a larger discussion about that and sort of, rather than, you know, minimizing the issue, actually sort of bringing it out in the open for useful discussion. The fourth goal then is to develop and conduct training, not only for the board.
What does annual academic achievement goal contribute?
So, so there are, there, I have to look where it is, but we're, there's some mention of where we're supposed to work with the executive director on creating annual academic achievement goals. So I can...
Yeah, are those the APs in the end?
So, right, and so the, again, the committee is supposed to be playing a role in coming to the board with recommendations on that, again, from a governance perspective.
The Accountability Plan is for five years.
Yeah, it's separate from yours.
Correct. But we're, so again, I, so I will, I'll, you know, I'll provide the mention, I can't remember right off the top of my head where that is, but they would mention that we're supposed to be developing annual goals as well as the five-year goals.
So, they are annual, they're for five years, but they are annual. You have to visit them every year and you have to hit them every year. We don't, you know, the D O E wants to know why we're not hitting the goals each year.
So, again, the idea of training, you know, providing sort of training, learning opportunities around that responsibility for the board and also continue to do that at committee level. One of the things that I had sort of as an informal goal as we were developing membership for this year, but it never got around to it, I did ask a couple of people outside, we're looking to sort of add another member to the committee who might bring an outside educational perspective to, you know, again, just provide an outside perspective to the Education Committee to sort of generate ideas, provide a different perspective and so forth. So, that's, that's it around sort of the formal presentation. Again, I guess I would just emphasize that the Education Committee is looking to get feedback from, you know, from the board about, you know, you know, are we our target with our recommendations? What do you want to do with the recommendation? You know, what role could the Education Committee play in carrying this out and so forth?
So, do you, is that, are you expecting that response at this time or?
Yeah, no. No, no. So, so I think there's sort of acknowledgement that here's what we have. You know, I would expect that over a, you know, coming meetings or something, that we might bring this back on the agenda to have a sort of a broader discussion about, you know, what do we think about technology, innovation, alternative learning strategies? Are there other areas that the, you know, that the board as a whole is looking to address? And again, sort of, you know, as I find myself constantly saying, on that governance level, okay, of looking at faithfulness to the charter and academic program's success, recognizing obviously that Dr. McCleary and the administration and the faculty have, you know, their own responsibilities in that and, you know, there, there is a distinction between governance, as we all know, governance and management operations. And particularly in the education area, it becomes a challenge to sort of figure out where one ends and the other begins.
So, can I ask, Kelly, as part of next month's agenda, if we have time, could we talk about some of that because this being fresh, because I took, I saw a lot of people taking notes and I'm sure folks have comments.
Yeah.
Can we actually focus our discussion next on, on?
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Excellent work.
No, this is actually wonderful. Just that, just the work that it takes to narrow down to three strategic priorities. I do not, I understand most of that.
Well, as Dr. McCleary, Dr. Curry, and the members of the Education Committee who are here can attest, it did take a lot of hard work, so. So, actually, it'd probably be worse if there's Jess, there's Melissa, there's Jen, there's Lauren, who's there, and then again, Dr. Curry out there. We're looking forward to having Tom on there as a faculty representative in the near future. Not that we can replace Jess, but she's threatened to continue to come to the meetings.
You keep it to the different committee.
Then we'll have to go out and find somebody.
But you are looking for a backup.
Yes.
Well, right.
Well, so I think the, I think the committee as a whole has, has said that having Jess there to provide a faculty perspective has been helpful, as Jess and only Jess can.
You can still be on it. I could, yeah. I'll make a note of it.
Only if, only if she is appointed by the chair.
Right, we have the chair.
Just one thing that I think ties all three things together is one step we haven't yet, is if we could find somebody like that outside person, I was so struck with the woman who was, who was present at the beginning, came through January. And the idea that what we have is this kind of 19th century classical liberal arts education that we're delivering in the 21st century. Like, okay, who's on the faculty at MIT or WPI or someplace who's done that?
Yeah, but you know something? I would encourage us to really sort of engage Dr. McCleary on this because Dr. McCleary, you know, and, you know, doing this at a charter school, and one in particular where, you know, there's, you know, heavy emphasis on understanding, having deep understanding of these topics, he had some really great things to offer up and so I think that, I'd encourage that to be a starting point. It's not to suggest having some outside perspectives in, but I think having Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry as another, you know, but having Dr. McCleary's perspective would be a very good grounding for the board.
Does that just seem like, that's enough?
Yeah.
Right, thirty minutes.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Push that on into the next month's conference. So, we are closing on this year. Upcoming agenda topics, then we do have that for next month, like we've got the officer elections, parent faculty rep elections. That will be survey actually should come out. There's, there's the top gloss, there's the family survey.
Do you need my help?
No, you should work with the top.
Because I mean, I know Panera does it.
Yeah, yeah. Because of the other categories.
I don't think you can do it.
The family survey, that's for us if we're to stay, provide that next level detail.
So, you want that place?
Yeah. But it won't be the detail, just the this one, right? The top gloss usually takes some time to digest. Yeah. September, oh, and then the faculty discussion. I think that's what we forgot.
Education staff.
Discussion.
Just here.
It's double sided.
Did you involve any special edition discussion, any compliance?
Yeah.
Outfit?
Okay. I didn't, but now I have. I can say that's not like a lot.
And we didn't have financials.
Yeah, there'll be a regular financial thing, but usually the updates at the beginning of the year are not.
Does the board have to do the ED evaluations?
The ED evaluation is generally done after we get the faculty survey results.
Okay.
So, we have done that in either in June or in July. Yes. One problem that we have had, frankly, in doing it in June, is that one of the goals in particular is, with the KP results, they're always sort of lagging because they don't come out until July.
July.
Yeah. So, I would say doing it after July meeting. Have all the data.
The July meeting has been scheduled yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
They may not all be on board of draft, but I will make it up in there.
I may have to call in from Arizona.
And you can do that as long as we have seven people here. Okay. Any other agenda topics that I missed? All right. Okay, with that, so we're going to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategies for collective bargaining.
Can I just review meeting effectiveness? So, overall, we kept time on everything except the two topics, the CPAC review and the the survey results. I mean, we had a good discussion on both, but I think whenever we have survey discussion, I think we need to decide why.
That's more time, yeah, for survey decisions. All right. Yeah. Need to, first a quick discussion. First, the lengthy motion? Okay, we need a, we'll call those.
Yes.
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 Okay, we'll note that Jess is not joining us since we're only discussing this one topic. And Dr. McCleary and Joe Bartulas will be in for adjourned session. We also anticipate having Tom, Craig, and Mike Blass call in.
Is he holding that four crew right now?
Yeah.
Should we not get that over? What do you initially know?
Your office?
Yeah.
Two minutes. More than executive session.